Do we have a quorum?
Yes, we have a quorum.
Let's start.
You call the meeting to order.
I will call the meeting to order at 4:43. Should we start with a pledge?
Yes.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Chair Benson. Vice Chair Trumper.
Here.
Treasurer Tahima.
Here.
Commissioner Beecher.
Here.
Commissioner Peca, he said he may not be here due to an illness. Commissioner Nun resigned today, we'll miss her, and Commissioner Perry, not here. We have a quorum with four present.
Well, first order of business is electing some new officers. Do we have any discussion of this, any nomination, do we have to nominate, right?
Right. In speaking with the Attorney Laura Zagarelli, Zagarelli, she mentioned that it's practice that usually elections are held over until you have a full commission. Is that correct?
Yeah, just by courtesy, I believe. They, you know, I didn't initiate it, but the chair would say, let's roll this over to the next meeting, but you don't have to if you don't think that, I don't know the attendance practices of all of your members, but.
Can I make a point?
Please go ahead.
The point I would make is that two, well, we lost one, Amy Nun, so the other we could expect is Paul Perry. He's so new. It's in the, over the years of this commission, due to different factors, generally we give someone time to be on the commission before stepping into, although strictly speaking the municipal code doesn't require that. But, so we have a very new guy, a person who's left, and Commissioner Peca has in more than one previous election point in leading up to this year, made it quite clear he's not willing to take. So I think we have the pool that most likely the officers will come from.
That may be true. My point was that the others might want to have a say, but it's up to you.
Do you want to keep being chair?
I believe our next meeting, if we're not meeting in August, isn't going to be until.
October.
October, so by not doing it today, we're waiting until October.
I agree.
Which I don't know if that really, it doesn't hold anything up, really.
It's the pleasure of the commission, so if you want to go forward this evening, you may.
I feel fine going forward because I feel like Henry says the pool is what it is and we're probably just going to reelect the same people, so.
But there are term limits.
All right, I'll read the item then. For election of offer, election nominate and elect a new chair, vice chair, and treasurer. Recommendation by motion approve officers for calendar year 2025. So are there any nominations for chair?
Is anyone termed out of the office they're currently holding?
Yes, it's a one-year term for chair. Vice chair, there's no term limit, but for chairs, it's one year.
Correction, sorry. Under 2.26.070 of the Vallejo Municipal Code that relates to general regulations for boards and commissions and committees, every board, commission, and committee shall elect a chairperson and a vice chairperson from among its members. Each shall serve a term of one year and until a successor is appointed and takes office. A member may serve no more than two consecutive years as chairperson.
Which is true.
Meaning that if no one, if no one was elected, he'd have to serve it out and then after two years, he'd be termed out.
So at least term it out.
Okay, I'm just reading from.
Well, I'm terming out if we have an election today.
Is anyone else terming out of their position?
Well, what, what was read was that the chair and vice chair have one year, but two consecutive years, if I, my understanding previously that the vice chair, I guess I was misinformed, could serve more than two consecutive terms, but apparently that's not what it says, so.
I wasn't aware that the vice chair.
So, well, in the past, our vice chair was allowed to serve more than two consecutive years. They could serve a third or fourth year, they could remain as vice chair.
It says one year until a new person is appointed to that position.
The exception in our case is the treasurer.
The chair has, I don't know what the exception in your case, do you have separate rules? I don't understand.
The municipal code is, does not speak to a treasurer role, so.
Correct.
So the treasurer can stay on more than two consecutive terms.
Correct. Right now, we're just speaking chair and vice chair.
That's true.
That's how we've done it in the past.
Okay, that's true.
Thank you.
I think Benson.
If it please the commission, I would like to nominate Rebecca, Chair Rebecca Trumper for chair of the commission.
Are there any other nominations? Commissioner Tahima nominated Vice Chair Trumper for chair.
Shouldn't we hold the, if she accepts the nomination, should we do the voting and then go to the next position?
No, I asked if there were any other nominations for chair.
Oh, for chair, I'm sorry, there's a vice chair.
If there are no other nominations for chair, will you accept the position, Commissioner, Vice Chair Trumper as, no, if, does she want to be?
Right.
She has to accept it.
Yes, I accept the nomination.
Thank you. So should we do it one at a time? That's what I would think. So for chair, Commissioner Trumper has been, Trumper has been nominated and accepts the nomination as chair. Roll call. Commissioner Benson. Commissioner Trumper.
Am I supposed to abstain?
No, you can watch for yourself. Commissioner Tahima.
Oh, yes.
Commissioner Beecher.
Yes.
That passes four to zero, congratulations.
Thank you, I'm honored.
Now, for the position of vice chair, are there any nominations?
I would nominate Jill Benson for vice chair.
Can I second that nomination? Well, I seconded it anyway. It could be an alternate nomination.
Are there any other nominations? Commissioner Benson Beecher nominated Commissioner Benson for vice chair. Commissioner Benson, will you accept the nomination?
Yes, I will accept.
Thank you. If there are no other nominations, roll call. Chair Trumper, Trumper.
Well, that was quick. Power is amazing. Yes.
Vice Chair Benson.
Yes.
Commissioner Tahima.
Yes.
Commissioner Beecher.
Yes.
Then, it's been approved four to zero, congratulations. Commissioner Trumper, it's all yours.
I think we have one more.
Oh, treasurer.
To elect a treasurer.
Treasurer, forgive me. Nominations for treasurer.
I'd like to nominate Vince Tajima, Tahima.
Are there any other nominations? Commissioner Tahima, would you care to remain as treasurer? If there are no other nominations, roll call. Chair Trumper.
Yes.
Vice Chair Benson.
Yes.
Commissioner Tahima.
Yes.
Commissioner Benson Beecher.
Yes.
Nomination four to zero, congratulations.
All right, we have our officers. Um, next, we're moving into reports. Is there a report from city staff?
Uh, congratulations, there will be some changes, perhaps, the way commissions, meetings are held. One of the things that will be pointed out, that our council liaison does not sit in the, uh, the council liaison will sit in the audience and not on the dais. That was something that got changed around, but that's, that's, that's the norm of where council liaisons sit. So, you will see our council liaison in the audience there. And that's it for this evening. I hope we'll be able to move forward with the goal-setting this evening to, and perhaps create some type of a, a budget, but there'll be more in the packet under the item regarding the Zucker contract. That's my report, thank you.
Thank you.
Through the chair, one thing that we didn't get a chance to do prior to proceeding with the agenda was the switching of your guys' seats. The chair usually sits right there, so I already switched your guys' nameplates, if it's not too much trouble to have you guys switch seats as well.
Thank you.
Council does this too, where they do the musical chairs.
Do we have a report from our council liaison?
I have nothing to report, but just congratulations to Chair Trumper, Vice Chair Benson, and Treasurer Tajima. Thanks.
Thank you, and thank you for being in attendance. Can I ask, are you also on the liaison for the Arts Council? Or Arts?
No.
No?
No, that's Councilmember Matthias.
Thank you.
Matthias, Matthias.
Well, you're heartily invited to attend any of the McCune events, or open hours. We're working on increasing attendance on Saturday, open hours from noon to two, and participating on Art Walk Fridays to have the McCune open, and it would be lovely to see you there, or other members of the council. Thank you.
Thanks.
Could we have a report from the McCune Foundation Liaison, Commissioner Beecher?
Yes, after two postponements, the Foundation did have a meeting, and somewhat momentous. The Foundation, first time in quite a while, was able to nominate and elect a new board member, and it's someone that we all know here, because the Foundation is most pleased to welcome Rebecca Trumper as the newest board member on the Foundation. Rebecca's in a perfect position to kind of jump right in and get, hit the road running, as it were. One of the challenges with the Foundation is when someone new does join the board, there's a lot of unique circumstances about this collection, and owned by the city, and overseen by a commission, and who else, the members also Doshan, and the relationship between the two entities, with the Foundation managing the budget, or rather administrating, that's the proper word, administrating the budget. That's only because the city wants to reimburse a 501(c)(3), doesn't, the city doesn't want to reimburse individuals, so the Foundation has that role. But Rebecca's familiar with all of that, so that's a big plus, and of course, her many years' experience in supporting nonprofits, particularly in navigating the sometimes complicated world of grant applications and other fundraising endeavors. So, the Foundation is not, have the luxury of individuals with a lot of experience, including myself. So we've made some small gains over the years, little like $2,500 grant, local grant, which we appreciated, but we hope to really turn a corner with Rebecca on, and be able to go after much, you know, bigger sources, to, because that would be, it would help the collection, it's the whole purpose of the Foundation to begin with. Before I conclude, it's important that everyone here realize that there is precedence for being both on the commission and on the Foundation. I've been the treasurer of the Foundation for quite a number of years, and before, when Joanne Shively was alive, she was both on the commission and on the Foundation. And to, to go along with that, the Foundation is keenly aware of the Brown Act restrictions that the commission falls under, and to that end, in case you weren't aware, the Foundation has a strict self-imposed policy of no more than two Foundation Board members concurrently serving on the commission. That's to assure, both the commission and the Foundation wants its own assurance, that there will never be a situation where a meeting of the Foundation is a quorum of the commission, because that would be in conflict to the Brown Act and other unwanted, you know, problems, so that's simply a eventuality that will never happen. So with that, once again, we're very pleased to have Rebecca on the Foundation.
As we're switching from one chair to the next, Commissioner Benson, Vice Chair Benson, do you have any reports from your last period as chair?
I do not.
Neither do I. No, I actually do. The, I'm eager to, I'm eager to move forward with the work plan, and connected with the McCune Foundation report we just heard, to align the Foundation fundraising with the strategic goals that we're, hopefully will soon finalize as a commission, so that the Foundation can help us fund some of the work that we need to do around the commission's priorities of preservation, cataloging, and community engagement. Are there any other announcements from commissioners? I have a question, point of order perhaps, I don't know if that's the right term. Isn't there usually a treasurer's report in here?
Not necessarily every meeting.
Not every meeting? Okay, thank you. Activity reports, starting with the website activity, is that?
That's normally Commissioner Petka.
Does anyone else have an update in his absence? No? Okay.
I can mention something on the cataloging project that's unfinished business.
Yes, please.
Do you, do you want me to talk about that now, or?
Is that under?
Oh.
Oh, I think we'll get to that under new business, then.
Sorry.
Commissioner Beecher, any report on volunteer activities?
We're thrilled, we're thrilled with Zachary. He's been very instrumental with the Saturdays now, because although we had Commissioner Perry this past Saturday, along with Vince and myself, so that made it a lot easier with the information table up on Georgia, but other Saturdays, it's been only, you know, two commissioners, and quite frankly, the table wouldn't have been set up on those occasions if we didn't have Zachary here, so I'm still hopeful that we'll see other commissioners on, maybe one Saturday a month, but we're doing the best we can. And we are getting some response now. The whole thing is repetitiveness with that kind of effort, and now three, three Saturdays in a row, I think, at least now, and we had showing up, you know, coming down the stairs, like we'd like to see through the plot, and with, you know, the brochure in hand, because they got it at the table, and you say, oh, I'm interested to see what you got, you know.
Wonderful. It's time now for the community forum.
Thank you, Chair. I did start a timer on the top left corner of the screen, for interested parties to sign up for the community forum. Given we do not currently have any signups for the community forum, feel free to carry on with the agenda, and at the conclusion of that timer, if anybody signs up, I'll be sure to let you know.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the consent calendar and approval of the agenda. We have the minutes attached, and of course, the agenda attached. Would anyone like to move to approve the agenda in minutes?
Well, I have a point on the minutes in particular. If we look at the minutes.
Commissioner, we're taking the agenda first and then the minutes.
Agenda first, and then, okay. I don't, I have no concerns about the agenda.
Anyone have a motion?
Well, I do about the minutes, though. Are they separate motions?
They are separate now. If you look at your agenda, they're, they've been separated.
Just approve agenda and minutes. No, how are they separated?
They're not separated.
Oh, I see, by motion approve agenda, by motion approve minutes, I see.
Right.
All right. So, okay.
Do we have a motion? Anyone?
I move to accept the agenda.
I move to accept the agenda also.
All right, we've moved and seconded.
Yes, thank you. It's been moved by Vice Chair Benson, seconded by Treasurer Tahima, to accept the agenda as presented. Roll call. Chair Trumper?
Aye.
Vice Chair Benson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tahima?
Yes.
Commissioner Beecher?
Yes.
Passes four zero.
All right, and now on to the minutes. Commissioner Beecher, comments on the minutes?
Yes, so again, although it kind of indirectly impacts the agenda, but it's not going to change anything. The minutes, the last part of eight, eight D preservation, it's actually the second, the first two lines of the second page. It says quite clearly that the press to, that the display option be part of the next present, you know, part of the next meeting, and when that request was voiced by the nodding of Annette Taylor's head, I understood that we could expect the, that to be on this agenda, and I'm kind of confused why it was omitted, which.
I believe it falls under the item that we're, we're getting to, under, let me see in my pages.
It was the art display, it was the, it was, it was the second possibility for using the preservation funds, and this agenda only has one option, when it really should have shown both.
Through the chair. When I was reviewing the agenda, my recollection was that no one but Mr. Beecher had voted on that, like, there was no consensus for that, so I didn't think it merited being put on the agenda, but if, if you recall differently, then we can, we can modify the agenda, but hold please, I'm just, I remember there was a consensus as to how the monies were going to be spent, and no one picked up your, and I don't know if I'm.
My understanding is that, from the last meeting, is that the commission had voted a preference for spending the funds on the preservation work, if we could get it under contract in time, and if that wasn't possible, then we would revisit whether we would spend those funds instead on the display items.
But wording is, wording is important here. The, there was a consensus to look at the possibility and all the options, there was no vote, nothing was voted on. Voting, voting is with a roll call. Now, a motion was made that wasn't seconded, and it wasn't seconded in favor of this alternative consensus. At the time, we didn't know whether items would be identified, we didn't know if they would, an estimate could be found on such items in time, a lot of things we didn't know, but the commission was willing to see with the limited amount of time, maybe something could be done, you know, to use the monies in a different way. My concern was that, we, you never know where a motion's going to go, like with that one. Even if we had, we, it turns out some books were identified, and a sort of estimate was, was made. However, if that were to fail, and we have no other option on the agenda, we could stand to have forfeited that $2,500.
I believe the item is, is on the agenda, under the, I'm looking for the, the number of the item, where we're talking about.
Preservation is under preservation.
Nine B.
Nine B, that that is where it would come up? And in the meantime, we need to, we're focused on approval of the minutes. Would, do you, Commissioner Beecher, have a recommendation for adjusting the wording in the minutes, or do you feel that the minutes are accurate as they say?
I feel the, well, yeah, they, they appear to be accurate, it's just that it didn't follow through, and that's what from the attorney is saying that.
So, do you have any, Commissioner Beecher, do you have any changes to the minutes?
I don't have changes to the minutes, but I think that there's a couple of points that remain on this. One, one is that if the attorney is charged, was reviewing our agenda as is the case, and comes to a point to conclude that perhaps something doesn't need to go on, that's already been on and was asked to be carried over, that another, more information should be obtained first, before finalizing that decision, either going back to Annette, or Annette going back to one of us, that would have been appreciated and could have cleared this up. And the other thing that.
Through the chair.
I'm just hearing, I'm just hearing, you said something about, it could be possible to change the wording of the agenda if we really wanted to, I didn't.
No, let me backtrack. So I said my recollection, I, now, my memory's refreshed, I watched the video because I wasn't here, so I watched the video, because now you're, I remember thinking, whatever I thought, I'm not going to share, and I, so you guys did not, no one picked up on your idea, Commissioner Beecher, so I didn't think it merited, because everyone, there was a consensus to put the other item.
Yes, but I.
Before, on the agenda, so therefore.
I tried, I tried very hard to say, let's not lose track of the option we still have.
I, I know, but I think you lost that one, in my opinion, but you can go back and watch the video.
If we can move back to the item at hand, which is approval of the minutes.
Yeah, I understand that you want to move on, I just.
No, but then I'd also like to make sure that when we get to preservation, the recommendation under item nine B is to consider spending the $2,500 in question on preservation of a specific five-book volume set, and if that does not pass today, then can we not make a motion to spend it on something else instead, should that motion not pass?
That would be my concern.
Because that is the full context of, of what came out of last, the last meeting.
I know, and my draft was corrected, as she pointed out, because I, I did have the display, and she opined that because your motion did not get a second, that it should not move forward, and so that's, so if in fact, when we get to the item nine, there is a proposed contract, you know, I understand that that's not on the, that's not on the agenda, so what could possibly be done, and I have to wait for. So what could possibly be done, and I have to wait for the attorney to get back, if you want to correct, say you're making a correction to the minutes to add that, and then at least it's on the agenda, but it's not for action, so I don't know if that would, if that would do anything. Again, it was there, I was told, it was deleted and it was edited out because, because of what she just said.
I feel like until we get to the vote on item nine B, there isn't an issue. My understanding from the last meeting is that the preference of the majority of the commission, in fact unanimously of the commissioners present at the last meeting, was to spend the funds on preservation. It was a unanimous vote. And should that not be possible, then we wouldn't want to waste the funds on, by not spending them. And then we would reconsider the proposal to spend it. So I think pending the outcome of item nine B, I, we revisit this.
Yeah, I, it's probably not going to make a difference, because I think there will be support for the option that's there. It's more, if this scenario happens again, and I'd like the attorneys to be a little more astute about what they're doing, because it does have ramifications, and they're not always good ramifications. That's really what I'm trying to get across here. Because it's not the first time that the attorney, apparently doing his or her job, has really made it difficult for the commission to do its business.
Understood. So it's neither about the minutes nor the agenda, but more sort of the precedent of it?
Yes.
And I believe that the agenda needs to be, needs to go by the chair before it's finalized. So there'd be a commissioner signing off on it before it's publicized, correct?
Normally, I do speak, I do not forward him an agenda, but I do tell him what's on the agenda. He and I did speak prior to.
Right, right.
But we didn't go into detail. It was that we had the contract, so forth, on that particular item. But we do go over the agenda.
Is there anything in city code that prevents you from sharing the agenda, the draft agenda, with the chair before it's be public?
No, there's no, it's, it has just been a practice that he and I talk over the phone, but I can send it to him.
Yeah.
It's not, or send it to you now.
Great. So then that would hopefully prevent surprises going forward.
Yes, I can send it to you going forward.
But if we could include that in the, that observation and concern in the notes from the meeting, I would appreciate it.
Well, under, it will depend on what you do with the minutes, or you can, he, well, actually Commissioner Beecher can make that known under preservation. And since he says he has no problems with the minutes, unless you want to amend the minutes now to say you want to include that the display was to be considered. If you want to, so that's, you could do it either in the minutes saying that the, that the display, it was by consensus of the commission that the display could be brought back for discussion.
Now, the observation that I would like to have included in the record of this meeting is that, is the precedent it sets for the...
You're still on the same one.
For the city attorney's office to adjust the agenda and have it not be, and have it surprise the members of the commission that an item doesn't show up the way that it was expected to by a commissioner. And the solution for that is to share the draft of the agenda with the chair before it's made public. So if we could just note that anywhere, somewhere in the minutes, that would be great.
I'll note it if, if, you still need to vote on the minutes when we hear the, then I'll make the note.
Yes, me too. Okay, so, do we have a motion to accept the minutes as they stand? Or Commissioner Beecher, would you like to make it?
I'll motion to accept the minutes.
Do you have a second?
I'll second the motion.
After discussion, has been moved, has been moved by Commissioner Beecher and seconded by Vice Chair to accept the minutes as presented with a notation about setting precedence, regarding adjusting the dialogue that has been presented during the meeting, and that a draft agenda will be shared with the chair prior to going to print.
Perfect.
Roll call. Chair Trumper?
Aye.
Vice Chair Benson? Commissioner Tahima?
Yes.
Commissioner Benson?
Beecher.
Beecher.
Yes.
It passes four zero.
We have an agenda. We have approved minutes. Where are we? Onto recurring business. Have there been any items offered for donation to add to the collection? I'm not aware of any. Submission of monthly receipts for reimbursement. Treasurer Tahima?
There are no receipts to be submitted at this time. There will probably be some receipts submitted when the new fiscal year starts.
For the current fiscal year or for the next fiscal year?
No. We don't have future receipts. Yeah, we'll be doing a year-end closing.
Year-end close-up. And are we aware of the deadline for those to be processed by the city?
For this fiscal year, the deadline, well, June 30th is the deadline. They give us usually 15 days or so for submission, for the, any receipts to be processed.
So our receipts need to be in by July 15th at the latest?
Yes.
Great.
In the past, the finance departments always kind of, oh, they're so busy at year end, that they actually appreciate it being like, later in July or August, give us some time.
No, long, definitely not August. I believe it's, it may be a little later in July, but they've sent out notices that receipts and invoices should be submitted as close to the deadline as possible, realizing that there's companies that will take a while.
Well, that's, it's the foundation that submits the original receipts.
Right, if there's a change in the date, I will let you know. But right now, let's look at July.
Yeah, we can, it's, for the commission's purposes, even if we don't see a treasurer report till October, because there's no meeting in between, it doesn't hurt anything. This is really, the money's already spent by the foundation. So the transaction's already, expenditure already occurs. And then it's just a matter of the foundation getting reimbursed, which it wants to be, and what the deadline is for that, which is really not for the commission directly to have to worry about, so.
Understood. I just want to make sure we're being considerate to the, to staff when they need the information by. So July 15th at the latest. Next report under recurring business is docent participation. We also, no, never mind. Commissioner Beecher, do you have a report on docenting?
So, well, for some upcoming docent hours, there's a Sunday program, third Sunday of June, June 22nd. Mr. Kent Fortner, some of you may recognize his name, he's in the wine industry, I believe, or beer, beer brewing. He's also chair, president, rather, of the Mare Island Heritage Park Foundation. And as his role in, as president of that nonprofit, he's going to be speaking on preserving Mare Island history. So that should be, that Historic Park Foundation has really gotten up, you know, become very active, much more than in prior years. They're doing a lot of activity on, on the island, a lot of events. So I think people are interested in hearing about what's going on, so. And then we're starting Art Walk. July, July is the first Art Walk. We'll use the same format we used before we suspended participation 18 months ago or so. Namely, that the artists that have accepted an offer to, or an invite to have a display usually do two months back-to-back, two Art Walk months back-to-back. So July, August is Jennifer Larson and Stephanie Brown. They run, what do they call it, the Exchange or something on Marin. It's a creative place for sharing ideas and, you know, they give classes and all this kind of stuff. So they're doing a display on textiles. We never, I don't think we ever had a art exhibit of textiles. Should be quite, quite interesting. And then for September, October, is Michael Davy will be curating a display from, he's with the Arc Solano organization. They have programs for developmentally disabled adults, and one of their activities is like an art class kind of thing. And the, some of them are really quite amazing. I think far better than I can do. So that should be an interesting exhibit. There'll be all, you know, different types of art that have come out of that program, so. And I'm sure what's, I like about that kind, not only is it local, but I'm sure the family and friends of those individuals will be thrilled to see their, you know, son or brother or whatever have something up at the McCune and want to come down to see it. So that's the whole point. Okay, and I think that's, that's it for the moment.
Thank you, Commissioner Beecher. Those sound like great events. I'm wondering if there's a way for the partners of all of these events to do some joint or cross-marketing with us? For instance, Ken Fortner from Mare Island Brewing has a big posse of fans connected with Mare Island Brewing, and the Mare Island Historical Museum and Heritage Park have their own mailing list as well. So, and then similarly, for the July and September, the July, August, and the September, October Art Walk exhibits that we'll be hosting, that both the Exchange, formerly the joint, and the ARC could possibly be involved in helping publicize it to their networks. And further, the folks at Personal Space Gallery also have a close relationship with the Arc Solano Art Program. And maybe they could be brought back in. I know they did a tour not too long ago, but maybe they could also help publicize these events and share them with a bigger audience.
Generally speaking, when, whether, wherever the artist is coming from or associated with, it's in their best interest, they want to attract attention, it's their display. I, we usually pass, well, please, you know, do as much publicity as you'd like to do. We, I explain the type of publicity we do. I've never really, and I don't think you're saying to access directly their mailing lists, but we kind of encourage them to, you know, spread the word as best they're able. If you have another thought as to making it more, I don't know, concrete structured or something?
No, that sounds good. And offering, you know, if, if there's any way we can help support them in getting the word out, the shared flyer or...
Yeah, I'm sure the Exchange women are going to use their email list. I imagine Kent will as well, but, and that's still, you know, they're both upcoming, so I can check back with them again, but, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, on to new business. At the last meeting, and also one prior to the last meeting, we talked about various commissioners reaching out to their contacts to investigate best practices in cataloging collections such as the McCune's. At the last meeting, we kind of turned that into a ad hoc committee comprised of Chair Benson, Commissioners Nun, and Tahima. Commissioner Nun has since resigned, but do either of the other commissioners have a report on those efforts?
I can say that I've been speaking to a number of librarians who all are not very excited about coming and advising. But I'm going to just keep trying. I'll keep asking.
Okay, thank you.
What I've looked into is the content on our McCune website and how items in our collection show up when someone does a search on Google. So I've done a search with two items, the Albion Press and Grabhorn Press, which are pretty major items in the McCune collection. And when you type in either Grabhorn Press or Albion Press, you don't see a result on a search until it's on page four of a Google search. So I think one of the things that we were hoping to get out of this cataloging project was to see if we can have our items show more closer to the top, like on page one or page two. And Henry and I talked about this a few months ago, and this would require a revision of the website, revamping of our McCune website. And I have some information on search engine optimization techniques that a programmer could use to, let's see. So, you know, having various keywords and high-quality content, having mobile-friendly design on the website could enhance our, could enhance the visibility of the items in our McCune collection, just to show more, you know, to show more on like a page one or page two of a search. But our, the McCune website, as it currently exists, it's, it's pretty, it's a pretty, it's pretty old. It hasn't really been updated in terms of the structure for a long time. And there are certain parts of the website that are not very user-friendly, like if you're searching on a particular item and you want to see how many years, going back how many years we have records for, it just goes on one whole page. It's a very long page, and, you know, it's kind of cumbersome to work with. So, you know, there's certain ways that a programmer could make the website a little more user-friendly. So I think that's one of the things that we could probably do to make our website, you know, more user-friendly. So, you know, when people who are outside of the McCune, when they start looking at different items we have, like the Californiana Books or the various presses that we have, hopefully we can design our website so that a search on those items could, you know, show up more on the first page of a Google search. Because basically, right now, when you do a Google search, when I looked at Grabhorn and Albion Press, the first item that comes up is, is when it's in Wikipedia. So if it's in Wikipedia, that seems to get the very first, you know, very first mention in, on a Google search. So I think, you know, maybe we could try and get Ken's, Ken Ennis's son to try and work on the website and kind of do some revisions to make it, to make our stuff more visible.
So, this, a lot of valuable information, but just in terms of where things belong, so to speak, I, I get a sense that this is... so to speak, I, I get a sense that this is independent of a cataloging topic? It's impo, no, you think it's dovetailed catalog?
Because our catalog lives online through our website, I think it's relevant.
Okay, well, I'm not sure how much discussion we can have this evening, but...
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we can have a whole lot of discussion about it, but I think that's great information to add into the work plan. I think this was just receiving information that has been gleaned so far on our research process. Anything else on cataloging at the moment?
That's all I had.
Shortly, we're going to get to the Commission work plan discussion, where I think we can circle back to what to do next in terms of our cataloging priority. But for now, let's move on to any updates on preservation. At the last meeting, well, we already started talking about this item of getting some preservation work under contract this fiscal year. Update from city staff?
Yes, thank you, through the chair, Attorney Ziegleroli. And I spoke with Karen Zucker after then Chair Benson had forward the photos to her. She sent back a response. We called her to see, to find out a couple of things, because in the past, we did not use the city contract, we used her agreement. She was willing to use the city agreement as well as provide the insurance. So we've worked with our Armon, who's our, our risk manager, to get the appropriate insurance requirements. One of the questions he asked was how would the documents be transported? And I said that Commissioner Tahima had volunteered to take the items to Karen Zucker as well as bring them back, so he would have to fill out the form. It's being redrafted, re-edited, but we do have a draft agreement. We're ready for, with the scope of work that was provided by Commissioner Tahima, the five, the five volumes of work, as well as it, that's the, that would be the scope, and the amount is up to $2,500.
And then if, through the chair, if I could add a couple, so Karen informed us that upon having the books in her possession, the estimate might change, it might, it might increase, it might decrease, but if it increased, then it would still be capped at $2,500, and we would come back at the next meet, she, and she can't do this on a rush, so if we get the contract for this year to spend your $2,500, it would be, the funds would be encumbered, and then she would not be paid until some later date when, when the work was finished. And if it's limited to $2,500 and she can't finish, then we would bring that. If you want to maybe discuss that as part of your motion, what to do, otherwise she can keep them until next year when you get another $2,500 and finish it up. But I, I don't know if you saw her scope of work, but for each volume, she would say like, the cover page is brown and needs, you know, she didn't quite say how she was going to repair it, but she would say like, a page is loose, a page is missing, a cover is weak, a binding is weak, what, what have you. And so she, I guess the plan is to fix that the best she can. So we have it ready to go. City manager can sign it if you guys approve the expenditure.
Yes, just a couple of observations. It's interesting how it was handled at this point, because the timeline was very different from what we've done in the past, not due to any, anyone in particular, just how events played out. Because in the, up to this year, when we've taken advantage and had Karen work on items, she had the luxury of seeing them, you know, they were brought to her ahead of time, enough ahead of time, that she created estimates from visually seeing what she was going to be working with. And she does very, you've seen them before, very detailed. This is a complete detailed estimate from Karen on her letterhead with each item and the condition as she's found it and the plan to repair it. So at the moment, she couldn't do that, as, as the attorney has already said, because she was working from photos. So we only got this minimal, and almost certainly, one or more of the volumes is going to mean more than two hours.
That, that's, can I see what you have, both of those?
That's the email from Karen.
That's not the, that's not the scope of work. We have a detailed scope of work.
From the pictures?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, so, but still, it's, it's unlikely to deviate much from what her office commented.
Do you have a specific question?
Well, just that I agree very much that we should, in going forward with any kind of motion, say that it's based on a preliminary estimate, and it's obviously can't exceed $2,500, because is a good likelihood we're going to be, end up revisiting this, maybe not until October, at which point we could look at other sources to, you know, add funds, either because we'll be in a new fiscal year, or we have used from the interest side of the budget, we have taken monies there and, and used it for preservation. We just prefer to use the city stipend, because we, we have nothing else to use for hospitality and supplies and, you know, publicity and all of that, so we can't use that on the, on the city side. And even a third possibility, if it ever came to that, if we're still scrounging around to come up with some funds, we could ask the foundation if they could step in and help. So there are other sources, but I would suggest we stay with the $2,500 out of this fiscal year and see how far that gets us.
Excellent. I think my understanding is that's exactly what the contract says. Does anyone else have any questions or concerns about the information from city staff?
I have, I have a couple of questions. So is the release form ready to be signed and we can proceed with delivering the George Washington books to Karen Zucker?
We haven't voted.
I believe we need to approve, we need to move second and approve a motion to allow city staff to sign the contract as was just described to us by Ms. Taylor. And then, once that's signed, then you would need to sign the forms to have the risk protection to transport the items. Is that correct?
That's correct, and we would amend the policy, the risk drafted slightly, to have the chair sign if, after you guys approve the trans, transport of the items to the consultant to do the work, the art conservator. So right now, it, it says three, three persons on the commission have to sign it, and it really should only need one if you guys all vote. So that's what I, the change I would make to that.
And do we have a motion? Can I move as chair?
Yes.
I would like to move that we accept, does it say it there?
Recommend.
I recommend that we spend up to $2,500 on art preservation of the five-book volume set titled The Life of George Washington, Commander-in-Chief of the American Forces. So the amount would not exceed $2,500, and once Karen Zucker, our preservationist, reviews the items in person, that if it looks like the work would exceed $2,500, we can reconsider that at a future meeting. Did I just make the motion too complicated?
No, the, as, if, once you get a second, the contract would be forwarded to her, up to $2,500 with the scope of work. Now, if in fact, as was stated, it goes beyond that, as have you've done in the past, if the work, the five volumes, more than $2,500, she will do up to the $2,500, and the books that are remaining, or the volumes that are remaining, could then be, have acknowledged future funding from other sources.
We could amend the contract to increase the dollar amount, and because she didn't sound like she was going to have time to do it quickly anyway, I think you'll be back in session.
Should we also specify that it's out of the city stipend, as opposed to the other part of our budget? Is that already?
Well, it's the $2,500 out of the preservation fund, correct?
Okay, then that category does show that it's from that, from that segment, okay. If that, if that's good enough, then fine.
We need a second.
I'll second it.
I think it's been moved by Chair Trumper, second to Vice Chair Benson, to spend up to $2,500 on art preservation of five book volumes that title The Life of George Washington, Commander-in-Chief of the American Forces. Call for the vote, Chair Trumper?
Aye.
Vice Chair Benson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tahima?
Yes.
Commissioner Beecher?
Aye.
Carrie Swartzero. So what I will do as a follow-up, we will be in contact with Karen Zucker and Commissioner Tahima, once everything is in order, I will contact you so you'll know, and I will also contact Chair Trumper, since we are revising it, so she can sign instead of having three people, just to have the chair sign the release. So hopefully within the next, within this week, we'll be able to get all of that done.
Thank you to the team at the city on staff for moving that forward and getting that, those funds encumbered in this fiscal year. That's great. Okay, our last item on new business, or unfinished business, is revisiting our work To discuss the status of our work plan and consider the appointment of subcommittees or other means to complete unfinished portions. So when we realized that we had run through all of, for instance, on the, the preservation area of our priorities, so we've agreed that our priorities are preservation, cataloging, and programming slash docenting, public access, volunteerism, that kind of all goes together on programming. So those are our three priority areas that we want to develop work plans for. With preservation, we realized that our list of works that needed preservation, we had run through them all, and so rather than letting the preservation funds go or spending them on something other than preservation, we quickly identified this five-volume set that we just approved for preservation. But there's a bigger plan we need going forward to set some standards for how we preserve the work, how we monitor in an ongoing way the health of the works that are in the collection. Similarly, with cataloging, some of the commissioners have done some work to, to research proper, like best practices in cataloging, the current state of how things are cataloged and how accessible that is. We need to turn that into an actionable plan with the near-term goals and longer-term goals, so that that can guide our work over the next year, as this fiscal year is drawing to a close. We had established a bit of an ad hoc committee, subcommittee, for the cataloging work. I'm wondering if that is the way we want to move this forward? I mean, there are four commissioners here tonight, one very regular volunteer in the audience, two commissioners who aren't here to speak for how they would want to be involved in this, in the steps needed to develop the work plan. I am open to ideas, and maybe we can just kind of have some open discussion of ideas to move this forward, from intentions and three very big general categories, to turning that into specific actionable, measurable steps that we can complete this year and lay the groundwork to be completed next year and in the short-term years ahead.
Do you, do you want to see if, with the net, whether we have an option? What do we call, do we call it a commission retreat or something, the one time a year, later in the summer or something, where we, it's like a special meeting and could be devoted to just, you know, hashing this out?
I like that idea. That's how we got, as far as we did with the work plan, with our first round of work.
We need a net's assistance.
Can you help us, talk us through how we could establish another work session, like a retreat kind of work session, that we could, where we could work on outlining the next steps, similar to what we did probably almost a year or a year ago to establish our priorities for the work plan?
There's no meeting in August, however, you can have a special meeting in September. I will sacrifice myself with...
It's going to be good, it's going to be productive.
Yeah, so that's why I put to be determined in your agenda, instead of saying October, because I thought you may need a September special meeting. And so I'll just have to check on availability of dates to, to, to find out that, because we need to move this forward, especially if you are going to request additional funds for some of the activities that you are proposing. And as Attorney Ziegler, Ziegleroli, Laura, pointed out, that the Economic Development Commission has an approved work plan, and they're also presenting their second work plan for this fiscal year on the first meeting, well, it'll be the 10th, on June 10th. So you may want to tune in to also see that, and their work plan will also be in the agenda packet.
I think it's tomorrow. Is there, I thought it's the 10th.
They switched out the agenda, so the budget study session is actually on the 10th, and tomorrow, they're holding a special meeting where they're going to be presenting that EDC work plan.
Well, that's news. So it's either at tomorrow's meeting on the 3rd, I, I hope our staff knows, or on the 10th, yeah, because she's not in. So if you, you can check, go online and check the council agenda, but they worked, the Economic Development Commission worked very hard, it took them like a year to work on their work plan. They were budgeted, they requested and received $10,000. They have not spent the $10,000, they were allowed to carry over. One of the things that they were doing was banners, and so that will be part of their... And so that will be part of their presentations, my understanding. But if you would like to, again, go online, if it's either the 3rd or the 7th, and their work plan will be included, it is the 3rd? Will be included in the agenda packet.
Excellent, that's really helpful. Commissioner Beecher?
From what I remember, I think it was last year, these kind of retreat kind of meetings could only be, it couldn't include regular business.
Correct.
So what we did was, we had two back-to-back. We did a very brief meeting with just a couple of essential, regular item business things, like maybe what's going to happen to find additional funds or approve them, kind of thing. And then closed that and went into the longer, you know, other meeting that we wanted to have.
Right, there was, that did take place last time.
Yes, we might do it again this time around.
I don't know what additional business that.
Well, just namely, the preservation.
Well, wouldn't that be part of your work plan?
Well, I don't, like this whole thing with the contract and if we have to agree to use funds from a different source, wouldn't that be outside of?
We won't know, I don't know that we would know by September, honestly. I mean, we, we might, we might not, just throwing that out there, I don't know. Because she said she had a lot of work currently.
So how about if, how about if, it's just an option, that if scheduling a meeting in September ends up budding up closer to an October, our next October meeting, that it's an option that we have them back-to-back? Or if this preservation work is coming through, that kind of at your discretion, Ms. Taylor, we could schedule a very short commission meeting right before the special meeting to handle that if it happens to come up within enough time for public noticing? No, yes?
That works because you only need 24 hours for a special meeting. So you could add it at the last minute.
Thank you, Laura. Thank you for volunteering me. We were discussing this, but.
It's at your discretion. So if that's not helpful to use that option, that's fine too.
No, I think that, especially, I want to see this commission move their work plan forward. I think it's been stalled for a while. So if that takes a special meeting, yes. And if in fact, there is needed an additional special meeting to do some regular business, that's, some business that's on your regular agenda, we can do it. The, I would look for a date in September. I think the 1st of September is a holiday, there's a holiday, is it Labor Day or something? And so I'd have to check. And it would be a 4:30, the same time, 4:30 probably. Looking at my schedule and what I need to have done. Because I do have a, in September, a Culture and Arts Commission meeting as well. So I'm juggling that as well as some other things, grants and things that I'm working on. So if in fact, you're committed to a special meeting, at least one special meeting for the work plan, and if it's necessary to do as we did last September, why not?
Thank you. I also want to, another option would be to, let's see. Last year at our work session, or when, yeah, I think that was last September, I had presented and shared with the commission some notes about sort of the needs, some of the needs that had been identified in each of these priority areas. So it would not take much work to create, for me, to create a draft from that of next steps that then could be a starting point for our discussion at the work plan meeting, the special meeting, to, you know, it would just be a draft. So we could look for gaps, items that are missing, talk about priorities, whether it's an urgent priority or if there's a dependency that one task needs to be done before another task could get done. So it would give us some meat to chew on at the work session, so to speak. So I could offer to do that.
Yes, through the chair, the list that you provided last year was very helpful to move the discussion along. So if you have something similar to that, I think that would be very helpful. I think it keeps the commission, keeps you on track and keeps you focused. So that would be appreciated, I believe, by the commissioners. So we will say at least one special meeting in September, perhaps two. And I will try to find a date. Are there, question to the four of you that are here, are there any dates in September? You know, Tuesdays are usually council meetings. First and 3rd Mondays are planning commission meetings. So we're looking at a Wednesday, some, if, maybe Wednesday or Thursday. I will check with the city clerk's office to get date, possible dates that are available. And I will poll you for that. But do you know of any dates right now that won't work for any of you? Any vacation times or anything of that nature?
I don't think there's any dates identified right now that wouldn't work. Yeah, so we'll wait to hear from you and then let you finalize it.
I was just asking Manny if you guys are available during the day. He's not opposed to, you know, putting on a day meeting. It opens up the dates because no one uses these rooms during the day. I mean, there are a couple of special functions, but I don't know what your work schedules are like. But if.
We'll say at 4:30 would be a special time. I know that Vice Chair Benson, I don't know if you would want to take off for a meeting or day, things of that nature. But I think it's, it's perhaps easier at 4:30 time that has been their regular schedule.
Yeah, at least two of the commissioners work, yeah. Otherwise, we'd be happy to try to accommodate it. I know it's easier for staff.
Right, so I thank you. So I will, the follow-up to this particular item is that I will check with the city clerk's office to see what date in September may be available around 4:30 to hold at least one special meeting, maybe two, with one perhaps lasting, the last September, you only lasted 15 minutes. So you had put maybe 15 minute in between the time that you schedule the regular special meeting and then the work plan special meeting. How's that?
That sounds good, if necessary, yeah. Okay, future agenda items. Work plan categories not selected as top priorities. So the three priorities that we were just talking about will be listed on future agendas. I don't think we'll really know that. I think doing the special meeting, we'll have a much clearer idea of how those priorities are going to land. But does anyone else, any other commissioners have any future agenda items they would like to raise? Because it won't be talked about until December. So speak now or wait until 2026. All right, next meeting date to be determined, as just discussed. And I think if there's nothing else that anyone wants to say, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
At 6:06. 6:05, yeah. I was looking at the one on the, on the computer here, 6:05.